Call the meeting to order, rule call.
Britt?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
McCain?
Here.
Wertz?
Here.
Hyon?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Rust?
Here.
Hanfelder?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Now, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have any public comments?
No public comments were submitted.
Okay, anyone on the internet here or on Zoom that wants to have dialogue? If not. Okay, we have the Omnibus Agenda. Need a motion to approve all the items that will do it in one motion unless there's a board member who wishes to vote separately on any of the contracts or any of the items in the Omnibus Agenda. And I believe Kevin, did you?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to vote on K, L, M, and N. That's K, K as in Kevin, L as in Laura, M as in mother, N as in nothing. I'd like to pull those and vote on them separately.
We have a motion to approve all of the other items on the Omnibus Agenda. Need a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
And we have a second? Okay. Any discussion? Rule call.
Britt?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
McCain?
Yeah.
Kevin, I assume you want each one of these items separately?
Yes, please.
Okay, on K, we need a motion to approve K.
Motion.
Second, okay, we have a motion, any discussion?
Yes, I just have a, I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more about the item on Pixus. I see that we've got like, there was a breakdown there of 10,000 and 15,000. 10,000 is called the deductible. I forget what the 15,000 was called, but I don't know, for some reason, back in my mind, it was going to be 5,000 with Pixus. Is that, is my memory just faulty on that?
It was 5,000 for them to do an analysis of whether or not we could put together a claim.
And we've already paid that?
We've actually haven't paid anything, although they have charges of about 2,500 through the end of October.
Okay, so this, this $25,000 does not include that amount that we're gonna have to pay them for their analysis, right?
Correct, correct. This, this is to move to the next stage of claim preparation.
Okay, so are they, so we're sure that it's not gonna be any more stages to the claim, right? Charges from Pixus there? It looks to me like it's complete. If I looked at the scope of the work, I couldn't think of anything else that they could do, but.
He put a cap on it at 25,000. He doesn't believe it will take 25,000 unless there's a lot of questions and pushback from the insurance company that could involve more time on their part. We won't know that until we put a claim out there. But it depends on how much, you know, how much they accept our claim, I guess, as is.
Was there, is there something in the contract that isn't out for them or gives Pixus the right to bill us for, if there are some extenuating circumstances like you described?
No, he, he cannot, will not go above 25,000 without authorization from the college. And he set the amount at 25,000 with the expectation that we probably would not have to come back and ask for more.
Okay, now, and I, I, I didn't, could you explain why you had that, that breakdown between 10 and 15? I don't really see there, that there's a difference, or?
Because we intend to pay 10,000 from the deductible that we will have to pay on the claim. And the 15,000 will come out of our recovery amount. I mean, we can take 25,000 out of the recovery amount, it doesn't really matter, but we have a $10,000 deductible on the claim.
Yeah, $10,000 deductible, but we're gonna have to pay that regardless.
Correct.
I, I guess, I, I guess I don't think there was any, there's no, there's not like $10,000 out there that somebody's gonna give us so that we can pay Pixus. It's $25,000 is what we're gonna have to pay Pixus. And we have a $10,000 deductible, which is just.
Yeah, we will pay for the operating funds, like vindicated.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that.
Okay, any other discussion? Call for the vote then on K.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Britt?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Gonna need a motion to approve L. In a second. You have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion on L?
Yes, I'd like to discuss the item called, well, I'll just call it the food gift certificates. I, I, I'd like, I need to know more about that because my initial feeling is that that's, I don't know what, I'm kind of puzzled about that.
Lori, explain that to me when I called her. Lori, are you on there to explain that?
I am, but I, I'm gonna defer to Sean. I'm sure he can go into more depth, but this is for our talent search program that works with middle school students. And I'm sure Sean can explain what we're trying to do in, in the wake of COVID, so.
Sure, and so the Talent Search Upper Bound programs both generally spend money on food. So these are students who, high school, middle school students who are lower income. We're trying to get them interested in school. Some cases, we're pulling them out of classes, we're seeing them before school and after school. And so for them, incentive to participate, food is actually an active incentive for them to participate because they, they just don't have much money and much means. And so we're trying to find ways to constantly pull them in, constantly incentivize their interaction with our counselors. Crystal Robinson, who's Director of Talent Search Upper Bound, is also on the call.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I wanted to just add, if I may, to what Dr. Hill just added. Basically, what the number that you're seeing, and, and I think it's the, the food gift cards that come in at a really high amount because that is for an eight-month period of time. And we're looking at, we have over 700 students in our program that we serve for the Alden area, Jerseyville, Southwestern, East Aldenwood River, Roxanna. And so we have over 700 students, and so we're looking at trying to provide them $10 per gift card over the course of eight months. Now, the important piece of this is that we did get our authorization from the Department of Education who told us to, to use ways like this, you know, because of COVID. And because the kids are virtual, most of them are virtual, you know, we're, we're trying to incentivize them to continue to participate in our program virtually as well as do well in school. So just so you know, the Department of Education also gave us permission, you know, not only to do gift cards, food cards, but to also purchase technology and PPE for students who, who need that.
And Crystal, I just want to add to that, this is all being funded through the Department of Education as well. This is a grant.
So that would be no institutional funds, you know, being used towards this. This is all the grant funds that we have already been given for this grant year.
Is it working?
Yes, it is, it is. You know, we've, we've had.
It's not gonna be working if it hasn't been started yet.
No, 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 oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought she meant it was the program working, I'm so sorry. The, the virtual program is working, but we have been telling them that we are going to have some things for them. I know a lot of the students are really in a bad way, you know. We have to, you know, remember that, you know, as adults, you know, it's, it's difficult for us to even deal with remote working and such, you know, but remote learning is, can be very challenging. So we're doing everything that we can to be supportive of, of our students.
Well, I certainly support what the efforts to try to draw more socioeconomic disadvantaged people into our program and, and eventually to become students at Lewis and Clark.
These, these are, these are middle school and high school students, and they would be not just students at Lewis and Clark, but a lot of these kids would even go on to four-year, they would start off at four-year schools. So the Talent Search program is housed at Lewis and Clark, and we, we've been at Lewis and Clark since 1991.
It's, I mean, it doesn't seem to be something that's very, going to be very significant to these students to get a $10 food card once a month for the next eight months. That's, that's why I understand, that's how you come up, that's, that's why it costs approximately $48,000. Is that a not-to-exceed number, 48,000, or is that an estimate, or?
My, my calculation and from what we had worked with, I believe Jennifer Brantley was a person that we have been working with, I believe that is the exact amount that it would be.
So you're, you're going, somebody's, I, I kind of think of this as being kind of an administrative nightmare. Somebody has to go and buy the, buy a bunch of cards, get some money from Lewis and Clark, go buy all these cards, bring them back, figure out who, what child is deserving of a food, of a card, and then mail it out to them.
May I speak, please? Just so I can clarify, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I wanted to just kind of, maybe I didn't explain it properly. There are already 700 students that are in the Talent Search program. So those students have already been identified, they participate, and they have been participating. So the, the administrative part of it is that, that, you know, us getting the cards and sending them out is something that we have done before. This is not the first time, you know, that we have been able to give gift cards. So our process of being able to get to, to secure the cards, I'm sorry, and then to send them to our participants is intact. It, it is not a difficult process at all, and the kids look forward to it. Whereas $10 for one of us may not be significant, but it is very significant for maybe an eighth grader.
And how, and how are the cards sent to the students, are they mailed?
Yes.
So that's another $2,500 in postage, right?
I believe the, the postage was itemized. I don't have it in front of me because I couldn't download it, so I do apologize, but I think that the postage was included.
In, included in what?
Or is it, I think it's included in the 48,000, is that correct, Dr. Hill?
That I'm not sure of, I think it is, it depends on the number of cards you're actually ordering.
Well, if you're getting 600, if you have 600 kids for eight months, that's 48, 4,810 dollars per, $10 per month, that's the $48,000. So what other, what other alternatives have you looked at as far as how to spend that $48,000? To me, the $48,000 could be maybe spent more effectively.
Well, we, we are taking our guidance from the Department of Education. We have a program officer that we communicate with regularly. And actually, he is the one who told us that these are the ways that other programs are, are meeting the needs of their students. So we just wanted to kind of do what we've done before, you know, in the past, but also, but what the Department of Education is kind of directing us to do.
And I can add to that because we have also obtained grants for those amount of dollars too. And it is earmarked for those areas. We gave out $100 gift cards from Walmart to families in need, over 600. And it was not an administrative headache, it was really a privilege to be able to help these families during this time. So I commend this program for doing what they're doing for those students.
So maybe a little bit off the subject, but what is, what is happening for these students as, as to provide a decent Wi-Fi capability for them?
Well, we have, we have also been partnering with the respective schools to secure hotspots. Now, a lot of the students, you know, they, they have been trying to, to attend school via their, their cellular device, or, you know, some of them were lucky enough to be given Chromebooks from the district. But we have also tried to secure some hotspots, and I think there is also, it might be a line for that for the Upper Bound program. And that also, we're taking our direction from the Department of Education of saying that this, this is what they want to see us do to support our students at our target schools in our communities.
Where will these cards be safeguarded until they're distributed?
They most likely will be on campus. You know, we, when we have gotten them before, we don't go all out and, and spend, you know, $4,000 per WAP. You know, we, we do it over a course of a week or two. And, you know, we have a system where we mail out so many, and then a day or two later, we mail out another, another batch. So it's not that we have $4,000 worth of cards on campus or in anyone's possession at one time.
How many, so you mail these out weekly, you said, something like that?
It would probably be several times a week, to different, different batches of students. But our goal is to make sure that every student who is going to get a gift card gets one through maybe a two-week period.
Yeah. Are you able to get any, any sort of feedback from these students, as, so how they perceive these cards? Or any other, or any other efforts that you have to, to?
You know, we, we, anytime that we interact with our students, and of course, you know, COVID has made this a little more difficult. But anytime that we would be in person with them, you know, there's always documentation of the, the student body, that the student group that we would meet with, who the advisor is, and, you know, the date and what the subject was. So we, we have to keep meticulous records for the Department of Education because we have to report to them annually. And so, you know, they're the ones who are kind of our guiding force of what we do, how we do it, and also when we do it. So, you know, we, we were trying to move this along, and then we realized that it would be easier, you know, for us to just try to bring everything to you at once rather than coming back to you on a monthly basis.
Thank you, Crystal.
Now, Kevin, you are aware that we're in the middle of a pandemic, aren't you? And that a lot of people are in crisis situations, especially the people that we serve in this community?
Yeah, I'm aware of that, I have.
Okay, that's all, that's all I wanted to, that's all I wanted to make sure, is that you were aware, thank you.
But, I mean, I, all I think I can say to that is that maybe $10 doesn't mean a whole lot to these, these students, and that, and.
Believe me, it does. Every little bit helps, believe me. And I get the feedback, I get the feedback, so I know what's going on. My finger is on the pulse of what's happening in this community.
Any other discussion? If not, call for the vote on L.
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder? Watson?
Yes.
Okay, item M, do we have a motion to approve, and we'll need a second?
Motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item M?
I, I had one, something else on the, on L. That's, that's all right, forget it, we've already passed the motion, that's all right.
So any, any discussion on M?
Yes. I was looking at that, that truck lease, and it's under the caption of change, contract change order. So does that mean that the Board of Trustees has already approved the contract? Now, this is some sort of a change, it's not obvious what the change is, if it's a change.
Yeah, that's correct. The total amount of that change on that change order is for two vehicles. There's a truck and a van that we would be adding to this enterprise lease in total over, oh gosh, I can't remember, Mary, is it a five-year lease? Or? So the total is 41,000, it ends up being about $12,000 annually in terms of expense.
Okay, so we approved a blanket agreement with Enterprise, but we've never approved the, the specific lease of these two vehicles, is that correct?
These are two vehicles we would be adding to that master agreement.
Okay, well, all right, well, then, I, I'm looking at that truck, for example, that's the biggest thing, of course. They're only expected to put 5,000 miles a year on that truck. Seems like we would be ahead just buying a truck. You ever considered that?
Yeah, well, we, we used to purchase vehicles, so I just want to add to this. This includes not only the lease payment, but it also includes a master maintenance agreement. So we won't pay any of the maintenance on this vehicle. And this truck is mainly used for snowplow on campus, which is why most of our vehicles don't, don't leave our campuses except for runs to loads and that sort of thing. So we do have really low mileage on our vehicles, which is why we started going down the road of these lease agreements because then when we do reach the end of the lease agreement, they are quite valuable because of the low mileage.
Well, at the end of the four years of lease, does the truck belong to us?
We have the option to purchase it or sell it, Enterprise will sell it for us.
So whatever they sell it for minus their service fee, that's what we get, we, we will get that for the truck?
Mary, is there, I'm not familiar with a service fee, but.
Well, there's a $400 service fee, but I mean, for them to, to sell the truck for us, they may, may charge something for that too. But let's say at the end of four years, the truck got 4,000, or yeah, 20,000 miles on it. So now it's worth $20,000, let's say. Do we get that, does this college get the $20,000?
We can do that or roll it into a future lease payments.
Just, you mean to reduce our lease payments?
Yes.
So, so, but I mean, the, the effect of that is that we get the value of the truck at the end of four years.
Correct. And, and we did do, Chris Paul has done a really great analysis over the past five years. And, and it's not a substantial savings, but when we were purchasing vehicles and we were having to spend quite a bit of money on the vehicles that we could afford to purchase, we're, we're actually coming out ahead leasing vehicles rather than purchasing them. We're spending less annually than we did when we were purchasing.
Yeah. I guess the only other alternative would be to just pay a company to clear the, clear the lots of snow, if we have any. What, what is the vehicle, what's the truck used for besides snow? I mean, what if we don't have any snow, which is?
It's also assigned to one of our maintenance employees on campus. It'll be used to move furniture and equipment, it'll be used for anything maintenance-related, so. But the, but it is going to be equipped with, with the snowplow as well.
No further questions, Your Honor.
Any other discussion from anyone else? Any questions? Call for the vote on M.
Britt?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Item N, we need a motion to approve and a second.
Motion.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, any discussion on item N?
I just have a, a little bit of a discussion on it. Certainly, obviously in favor of it since I made the motion, but I just wonder if this, I, I, I think this is a time when we ought to consider making the employee mileage rate the same as the IRS rate, just like we've done for, for Dr. Traska. I, I don't understand why we don't, I mean, we just haven't ever treated the employees that, that way for some reason. That's one comment, and the other comment is, I noticed that the expense reports aren't approved, so they ought to be approved by, by either the Chairman of the Board or myself to show that they're, that they've been approved in the minutes, rather than for somebody at some point having to go back and try to find in the minutes where that particular expense was approved. Which is probably for Dr. Traska's protection as much as anything.
I would make the notation on there that it was approved at this board meeting.
Yeah, okay.
I believe the direction was that the reports would be approved by the board.
Yeah, that's what the contract says, right.
And not anyone specifically.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Britt?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the informational items. Dr. Traska, do you do that, or Lori, or all of the above?
They're, they're informational. I know the one item I was going to add, and I, if it's okay, I'll do it here, was the recommendation that we have an additional item starting at the December board meeting, which would be sort of a budget health item, which would come before the Omnibus Agenda item. And this was a recommendation from the Finance Committee. You know, effectively just being able to provide a little bit more insight into why we are where we are with the budget. And so, you know, I'm gonna do it after the approvals, but if we look at page 71, you know, I, I, I'm gonna go ahead and, and sort of talk a little bit about why we are where we are. And then, of course, I'll ask Mary if she wants to add anything to that. But essentially, with the budget, you know, we, we are on track. And, you know, from a, from a process perspective, the board approves the budget at the beginning of the year. And it's important for the executive team and the members of, of, of every, every department on campus to operate within the lines of the budget. And so every month, you'll, as you know, receive kind of a snapshot of where we're at. At this point, we are ahead of schedule because in part, we're not having as many adjuncts. We are not traveling, so there, you know, you'll, you'll see projected budget, you'll see where we're at, and then you'll see the bottom line. So we're ahead, I think, a little over $400,000 at this point in the budget. So, you know, I would go, you know, on record to say that we are on track with having a balanced budget. And a, a big reason for that is because, you know, we're seeing obviously less activity. The one area which is obvious that we do have some vulnerability around is our student tuition and fees. Now, in this area, naturally, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And our enrollment management team has, I believe, done a tremendous job in beginning to reframe and refocus some of our strategies. I know Brett's been a big, big part of that. And so we already looking at, I mean, as you've seen in the spring, we're going to be piloting Blendflex. We're going to be putting the foot on the gas around competency-based education. I'll jump a little bit ahead, but I've been getting out, meeting with superintendents, and we're looking at new pathways into careers with our high schools, looking at expanding our, our high school partnership program in terms of essentially completely resetting it, but ultimately broadening access. So we can hopefully sooner than later begin to see the needle move on student tuition and fees, which ultimately comes from enrollment. You know, we get a third from taxes, a third from the state, and a third from student tuition and fees. And so ultimately what we want to do is see an increase in student tuition and fees. Because obviously the other two categories, we, we want to put as less pressure on those as possible and not depend on those as much as we need. So there's a lot of work going on there strategically, but as you can see, we're behind projections because, you know, that's the reality. Now, we aren't any worse off than our peers. I, you know, I would say in terms of innovation and what we're doing, we're ahead of the game. You know, I say that in this context and, and even having a call with ICCB and saying, what do we need to do to, to, to get approval for, right? For competency-based education, we are one of, maybe one other school in the state that's really looking at CBE, and that's going to change the game. And I've said that for months and months, even before I formally started. So those are, those are categories that we'll see improve. So, so with that being said, what we plan to do in a more formal fashion in December is we'll have that item on the agenda. I'll be able to dig in a little bit more to the budget. And then have Mary chime in a little bit if she wanted to add any additional insight. And then you'll have the opportunity to approve the omnibus agenda items, which obviously include budgets. So I'll, I'll hand it off, you know, virtually here to Mary and see if Mary has anything to add in terms of why we are where we are and, and any insight she may be able to provide. Otherwise, I'll, I'll, I'll rest there, so.
I don't have anything to add. You did fine.
Okay, thank you. I was hoping you'd say that. Well, you did a really horrible job. Let me just clarify. You know, and I've got to say, you know, I mean, for, for the record, I just, I've, I've got to extend gratitude to the team. You know, one of the reasons we're, we're, we are where we are with the budget is, is folks are, are being responsible and they're doing what they need to do to operate within the lines that were approved. So I'm very, very, very proud of the team. And of course, thank you to Mary, Nancy, and the team for keeping us all honest, right? To, you know, and, and I think that's important. We, we have a great team on the finance side. So, so that's that. And I can give a few other updates now if, if you'd like. I, I was planning to do that, just to give a kind of a Reader's Digest snapshot of where we are on campus and a couple things. The, the message is going out or it's been sent out, but graduation, we're doing a virtual graduation on December twentieth at seven PM. So that'll be streamed and I'll be doing some pre-recorded comments and, 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 and we have quite a few folks working on that. The strategic planning feedback process started last week with the campus team. The next step is to send out a very similar survey to our student group and to bring that feedback to start analyzing that. Dennis has been coding the feedback as it's coming in. As, as of today, we've got forty responses. Once that feedback comes in, I'll then send out, along with Dennis, a survey out to the community, to community constituents, get feedback from them, which would be framed in the context of here is what the team is really focused on in terms of what's important to us moving forward as an institution. And ultimately, to be sure that we're aligned with the expectations of the community, that we're not moving forward as an institution in one way, when the community is saying, hey, we really wish you would focus here. So that'll be happening. And then, as I've said already a number of times, probably around March or April, depending how things are coming together, we'll bring that strategic plan to the board for approval and adoption. And then it will formally begin on July first of two thousand twenty-one and go forward for three years. We also had an all-team meeting on Friday of last week, and I plan to do these probably every five to six weeks just to check in with the campus team, give a little bit of an update of where I am at as president in terms of engagements that I've been involved in, progress that we're making, and also, you know, talking a bit about the vulnerabilities that we're facing. We focused Friday's meeting really around gratitude and just reminding the team to be grateful for one another and that the work ahead of us is going to depend on all of us participating with everything we've got to, to make this work. So it was, it was a good meeting, about a half hour. David mentioned, I think, right before the meeting, but I, I presented this morning at the North Alton Godfrey Business Council, and that went really well, had an opportunity to meet with many of our small business owners and, and really sort of shared, again, my gratitude for all of them and what they do to make our region what it is. And so, you know, I mean, it's, you know, it's tough out there right now. So really being able to support our small businesses, I think, is critical in, in, in however way we can, it's really important. So it was an honor to speak with the group. It was announced, which you may have seen, but the veto sessions, which I'm not surprised, were canceled in Springfield, obviously due to COVID. And in terms of one of, one of the many processes that we're looking at on campus is around program development and program review. And we had a really good team meeting today where we're beginning to look at how do we close the loop on program review? And so we're putting together, and we'll talk more about this in future meetings, but a, a program review mover team, which is really going to look at, at what needs to happen there. So as we have it now, programs are reviewed every five years, and a lot of that is because of the Perkins grant requirements, Carl Perkins grant. But once that happens, typically those programs go off and they're kind of operating on their own. So we want to create a process that allows us to stay tuned in to what's happening in those programs and also to be sure they have the resources and the support around them to continue to thrive, particularly programs that may be struggling. I mean, it's one thing to say a program's struggling, should we cut that program? But it's another thing to say, hey, a program's struggling, what can we do to support that program in terms of resources and direction? So we're looking at how do we create a ro, a more robust, comprehensive process to support the team and faculty that are really working hard in those respective programs? So that's a little bit of what's happening in my world. As I mentioned to all of you as board members, every couple of weeks, I'll be giving you a comprehensive update on what's happening across campus in the different areas of operation, as well of, as what's been happening in sort of my world as I'm out and about, uh, meeting with folks in the community. So I, I'll, I'll end there, Chairman Hyun, and ask if there's any questions. Otherwise, if there's nothing directly for me, we have the informational items that are, that are there. And we have, uh, one of those items is our instructor, Chris Reynolds, who, uh, we appreciate him being with us this evening, who will present on the diesel tech program and the National Science Foundation grant, which he and the team should be very proud of getting. He'll talk a little bit about what's happening there. So I'll stop there and move forward.
Okay, if we're ready to move on to Chris.
I'd like to ask Dr. Traska a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Traska, you referred to several times to the team. Is that a certain group of individuals or does it kind of just depend on the topic? Or what, what?
No, I look at the whole campus as a team, and I look at us creating a culture of team of teams. So we'll have, you know, a department as a team, you know, within the context of the full team. You know, I talked a little bit about mover teams, and this is an idea that was implemented at my former college that really sort of transformed the progress that we were making. This is about setting an expected outcome and moving forward in a short period of time to conclude that outcome. So for example, looking at program review process, we don't want to meet for a year. We want to take maybe anywhere from fifteen to thirty days, have a focused team that's going to look at how do we reinvent or reimagine program review for the betterment of our programs and campus. And that team will focus specifically on that topic. But when, when I say all-team meeting, that is every single one of our team members is invited to that meeting, including adjuncts, part-time, full-time, anyone in between. And, um, and that is just me pulling the team together. Now, within the big team, you're going to, of course, have smaller teams that are working on more focused projects. So, um, but, you know, that's, that's my philosophy and approach. And we're, we're, we're going to always look at how are we doing this together and making sure that everybody has an opportunity to contribute, so.
Great, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
I may add to that, that this morning's breakfast, Ken also included all the, all the people at the breakfast as part of the team to, you know, express their needs from the, you know, that what Lewis and Clark can do for their company and what the company can do for Lewis and Clark. So, you know, the community is the team, but, you know, just to add on to what, what Ken was explaining, on-campus team. And I thought that would, it was received very well this morning at the breakfast, I thought. Very supportive of the college. Okay, if we're gone through P through T, why, I guess, Chris Reynolds, are you ready for your presentation?
Yeah, you guys hear me okay?
Yes, Chris?
Chris, one of instructors in the automotive program, as, as has already been discussed during this meeting so far, COVID has kind of inhibited the things that we wanted to complete in year one. So I'll kind of give you a timeline of what we've done so far and update on the meeting that we had last month to present year one's progress to the National Science Foundation, DUE, Advanced Technological Education, and then hit the objective. So we, we worked with admin the past year. We've taken a lot of feedback from our graduates that work for some fleet groups, Bi-State, being MetroLink, Madison County, and the Agency for Community Transit. Sue and I had a meeting with them last year. There's a very big need in the medium-heavy-duty truck bus transit side that we have the opportunity to fill. Fortunately, we were able to go after grant funding this past academic year and got approved for our second NSF grant, a three hundred thousand dollars for the next three years, to focus curriculum development in three categories of medium-heavy-duty truck and to include ag-based equipment. So what we plan to do as a program is build curriculum in braking systems, because it's a big priority for preventative maintenance, electricity, electronics, because it's a major priority in, in any part of the industry, and then also diesel engine operations. Reaching out to our graduates and people that have helped us out in the past, we got two skinny diesel engines donated last year, our last academic year. We just paid for shipping today for two Cummins engines. So I think the, the weight is like three thousand pounds for the shipments that are coming in for, from a graduate that works for Cummins corporate. And they're going to providing us with free technical training for their engine operating systems, which is going to be nice. One of the obstacles we've encountered, which is what pretty much everybody in the industry is running into right now, regardless, anything across education, is accessing training. While we understand the, the mechanical components, we understand the operation, our tech, our instructors have to go to technical training. So I was glad this past week we got notification, we're going to be able to go to training as long as it's appropriate and meets the needs. And we're, we're following guidelines for doing that. So I'll be going to Kansas City next week to attend Texas training through diesel laptops. They're using a program called American Diesel Training Center to familiarize myself and to share with faculty members the Texas Scan Tool that is on the purchase list that the National Science Foundation is funding. And then also after-treatment training, which has become a big portion of the heavy-duty diesel sides since the early two thousands, whenever emissions output was, you know, focused on in the, in the world. What we have to do is the program right now, we need training for brakes. I know Clayton Rant is going to be doing the brakes class. He's on here. He's had issues, as we have in the past, accessing technical training for that. Bendix, the big brake manufacturer, shut down all of their training events. So we don't know exactly when that's going to take place. And then I think Cummins, their donation is going to accommodate some of our needs to build curriculum in the engine side. The transition, the electricity, electronic side, I don't think is going to be that difficult. That's, that's what I'll be doing. It's going to be a direct transfer just in a bigger platform with some minor standard variations. The goals that we've got, or I'm sorry, the objectives for year one are, wanted increased student awareness and interest in diesel, biodiesel technology pathways and careers. I think when the students see that the potential earnings working for ACT, MCT start out at roughly forty thousand dollars a year or Bi-State Development started out at close to sixty thousand dollars a year with benefit coverage is a big incentive for them. There's also a, let's see, the gap in the next ten years, there's about eleven thousand jobs that are growing in that part of the industry just in the St. Louis metropolitan area where we're at. So the potential is very, very big for students to, to walk into careers that are going to be well-paid. They're going to be needed for a long time. It's a service industry, so it's never going to disappear. And what we want to do is, is meet those needs with this grant funding. Second one is increasing student participation in work-based learning. What we initially planned as this grant was going site-to-site and engaging the employers in the region with our students. Obviously, that's, that's not going to happen immediately, given the fact that we're still on a closure and our, our numbers or positivity rates are, are going up in the region again. But what, what we've done in the electrical class, we got the Volvo truck operational. And the students, the first eight weeks of the semester, they were actually pretty excited to, because accessing the starting and charging system components were much easier than they are in Malibu, to go through the process of measuring voltage distribution in a starting system, voltage drop in a starting system, cranking current in the starting system, and also load testing charging system and identifying those components. So they got exposure, not directly in a medium-heavy-duty class, but in, in a way for us to share with them how there's a direct transition of the skills required for the light-duty side into the medium-heavy-duty side. Let's see, new college courses developed and accredited in diesel, biodiesel. So that is what we are working on right now as faculty members. Clayton, are you, you want, have you given an update about what, what the update was from the brake system company, Ken?
I don't.
Is he on there still? Again, if, if not, no big deal, but they are, they are not allowing training in-house. So Bendix is not allowing that, which is pretty frustrating. But we've got another two months or so, I believe, before we have to submit a finalized draft of course development. And we plan to put the classes in place for the fall semester and move on from there. Scheduling is also kind of problematic for us. We're usually here Monday through Thursday, eight to one, two to three fifty, or five to ten for classes. So I'm going to teach the electrical class on Fridays from eight to one. That way, if students want to go after a certificate in this area, it's not conflicting with any of the other course schedules upfront. Clayton and Ben, the co-coordinators of the program now, talked about offering sections of their contextual classes, engines and the braking systems on a Monday, Wednesday, day or night that mirrored the schedule that they're going to be running during the daytime for their classes and, and the schedule that's in place. And the last objective for year one was increasing industry involvement, targeting at least four new industry partners during year one. We have two members on our advisory committee right now. One is Anthony Bridges, who works for Bi-State Development, MetroLink. And another one is Eric Schiferdicker, who works for an independent medium-heavy-duty repair facility in St. Clair County that are active and are coming to our meetings whenever we were able to have them. So I think progress is, is fine. Our initial recruiting plan was to use Friday Night Lights at our partnering schools, one being Alton High School, being more of a, an urban-based region and trying to meet the needs of that, that site, going to football games and sharing information about the program and what potential it offers. And the other partner school is Jerseyville. And again, that was planned to go there for Friday Night Lights for football, assuming we get good access to freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors that were thinking about planning what their career paths were going to be. Right now, I think IHSA is capped to start the football season on March fifth, if it happens. If not, our program officer at the National Science Foundation made a recommendation last week that we reach out to the active workforce and find out if there are any incumbent workers that need update training in a specific context and the courses that were developed this first year.
Thank you, Chris, very much.
Not a problem. Any, any questions?
Lot of information there.
Oh, yeah. I've got a bunch of sticky notes. I got documents pulled up right now, but it's definitely been a, been a fun year for it. But, uh, well, we're making progress. I wish it was a little bit more rapid, but the times are limiting what we can, what we can move forward with. And, and the NSF, to give you guys an update on that, the ATE Conference is, is an annual conference that the Department of Undergraduate Education through the National Science Foundation typically has. They host it in Washington DC. There were schools in Alaska, from Alaska to Florida, that were dealing with the same issues that, that we're seeing here. So it's, it's a national issue as we expect, but it became more personal communicating with people in New England and communicating with people in Alaska during this conference that their struggles are impacting their progress. But the National Science Foundation is wholly understanding, and that's why the officer recommended that we go after the incumbent workers who might need update training.
That's good. Update, yeah.
You, you, you had to Kansas City next week? You, you, you had to Kansas City next week?
Yep, and Kansas City on Friday, uh, for day one is going to be, uh, scan tool training. So we understand how to use the medium heavy-duty scan tools, and day two is going to be for after treatment.
Okay, Chris, like any other comments or questions?
I believe, uh, Julie has a question.
I just don't, I just want to say, uh, don't forget to, uh, that all of those tow boats that are going up and down the Mississippi have, uh. Big engines in them also.
Absolutely.
Um, my, my husband and I are involved in that industry. So, you know, we've got these. Yeah, all of them have at least two big engines in them and they need people to work on them. So don't forget about that. When you think about industry partners, I don't know who to recommend, but.
Oh, no, I, I don't think about them. They, they actually hosted us last year on a site visit at National Maintenance. And I thought our machining equipment was big when I started this, you know, as a student here, I went down there and looking at engines that are, you know, fifteen feet long and. It might take, you know, a couple of weeks to build one of those, but they have very neat systems.
Ju- Julie, you want to donate an engine? That's what I thought I heard.
Yeah. And you can, uh.
We'll take two, one broken, one operational.
Chris, on Broadway in Alton, they're rebuild, uh, locomotive engines. And I think, uh, if Mr. Fleming, I believe, is in charge of that. And have you? I, I visited with him and he, uh, beans were getting involved in this diesel, uh, he, he would like to be contacted.
Okay, I'll reach out to him.
Okay.
So my husband just met with, uh, um, representatives today, talk about, um, buying two, uh, Mitsubishi engines. So they've got, they've been putting Cummings in the, uh, tow boats, and now they're thinking about switching, so.
I won't tell our guys.
No, they won't like that.
Okay. Yeah, well, Chris, thanks. That was really good update. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Our problem, any questions is call or email.
Any other comments, uh, or questions to Chris? If not, I guess we're ready for construction project status report.
Lori.
I, I feel like, uh, you guys have already received this report probably for about the sixth month in a row now. So, um, as you can see here, we still have no movement from the Capital Development Board on either of these projects. You know, the one dates far back is November two thousand eighteen was emergency deferred maintenance funding. So. Things are moving quickly. Uh, we don't have any replies from C D B, uh, this month as to where we are beyond, uh, where we reported last month. So I do just want to add with the, uh, with the passing of the Omnibus Agenda items. We are doing some repairs in the fountain port area. We had some sinking underneath those pavers there around, around the fountain. Um, that we're creating some safety and trip hazards. So with the approval of that item tonight, we will be moving forward. Um, and getting that project completed hopefully here before, uh, any winter weather sets in. So. Any questions that the board has on campus construction?
Yeah, Lori, I'm glad you brought that one up about the pavers because that was my other, my other question that I had. This, uh, what is it? Mason's ma- masonry?
Yes, yeah.
There, the charge is forty dollars a square foot?
So those are. Yeah, those are, I just want to clarify, those are the pavers that are in that historical part of campus there. It's, it's not, not roadway pavers. Um, they're more of a decorative landscape paper, but we've, we've got some serious sinking. Um, that is, that's created some trip hazards. And I will say, we've worked with that contractor on multiple projects. They've done all of the tuck pointing to our historic buildings as well as the front wall in the past. So. Um, they do great work and, uh, you know, it's, it's right now, it's just more of a, an issue of safety for students or anybody walking through there.
Okay, so I, I mean, that's probably why I, I don't recall seeing any bids on that or, or even what, or. Where their phone is, I mean, they're, are they specialists?
Um, they are. I mean, there are other people who can do it and, and normally, uh, Mike Randall from, uh, our manager of facilities does. Capture a number of bids on, on most all projects. I can double-check with him. He would normally include them in this report, but. Given that it was under ten thousand dollars, uh, he may have only gone with one vendor. So I can double-check that, though.
And they've done work for us before, so we're familiar.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, with a name like Mason, what else are you going to do but Mason?
Right, yeah. What, when they get done, you feel like that's going to be a, a, a fairly permanent repair?
Yes.
They're going to be, I mean.
Yes. Yeah, no, we had done, you know, we've been doing quite a bit of work back there with some waterproofing as well as, you know, we did some electric. We, we did some improvements on the campus lighting, which is, which is probably why we're experiencing some of this settling. Um, so, you know, I, I guess hindsight is twenty twenty in terms of that, but I, I don't foresee any further issues. Other than, you know, just some regular routine maintenance that you would have on any sort of paved patio surface.
Yeah, Kevin, I commented about that, those pavers. That's kind of a, a sore subject with me. Cause even the roadway, they've, they've been deteriorating and, you know, when you have to manual, you know, manually. Put a paver in place, uh, boy, that really runs the cost up. Uh, on a roadway, but maybe this is around the fountain, maybe that's something different, but, uh. Uh, pavers don't, don't appear to me to be very economical. Way to go to build roads or do, do much of anything. Any other comments about construction projects? If not, we move on to action items and we need a motion to approve the student academic fees. For twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
So move.
Have a mo- Brendan's mo- made the motion. There's a second.
Second.
Okay, Kevin's second. Okay, any discussion? Or any information that we need, uh, the board needs to hear from anyone, whether it be Dr. Traska or whomever. Jill, do you need to?
Sure, sure. Um, so last month you approved, um, a variety of course fees. And these math department fees weren't complete at that point. That's why they're coming in, in a separate board item. The math department works closely with Pearson and, um. So some of those fees are with Pearson and others are with kind of our own homegrown math materials. But the, but the, and some fees, um, are going up a little bit, three dollars. Some fees are going down, some fees are staying the same and they're not showing up in the board item. But the real push behind fees. Is that students can have these course materials day one of class. One of the, um. Worst things a student can do in terms of student success in a course is to have to wait for funds before they can purchase their test textbooks. Sometimes it's two weeks or more into the semester. So more and more of our departments have moved toward this method. Which works well, very well for students and their financial aid will cover these fees as well.
Good. Thank you. That's a good way to help the students. I agree, I agree. Yeah, you had a textbook two or three weeks into the course. Wow.
And the textbooks are significantly more expensive than these, these versions. So it also, um, saves money.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Jill? Any comments? Call for the vote?
Britt?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Okay, need a motion on, uh, action item X, your new certificate pharmacy technician.
I'll make the motion.
I get a motion in a second. Uh, Jill, do you need to comment on this new program or someone else?
What I would like to do is thank Sue Sierwinski for hours and hours of hard work on this. And thank Lori Artists for our initial contact. And so Sue, why don't you tell the story behind Farm Tech?
Uh, sure, and, and I'm hoping my internet is good enough. Um. Actually, Mr. Hyen, you brought this to our attention before the whole COVID hit. Um, you had heard and sent an email to Brett Reinert about a change in the law. So Illinois law now requires, um, students who want to be pharmacy technicians. To be from an accredited program. Up till now, uh, we've just, employers have been able to just train their own and then they can sit for an exam. Now Illinois State requires them to be trained, um, through our, through an accredited program. So we want to get this program up and running.
Very good. Wonderful. You have a lot of people sign, well, it sign up or what, what about, uh. Updating people who are already on the job or are they grandfathered in?
They'll be grandfathered in, but we're hoping, so the law goes into effect January first, twenty twenty-two. So we're hoping to have this in place for fall. So that our first graduates will be the first ones that will, um, need that requirement and have that requirement on time.
And it, for example, B J C has two tiers of pharmacy techs. And if they have a certification, they get paid more. So that might help us get some of those folks who are going to be grandfathered in as well.
Okay, good. Well, congratulations on hitting a home run with that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
If no other discussion or questions, I call for the vote.
Britt?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Very good. Well, it looks like that concludes our agenda unless Ken or someone has some, something else to, uh, share with us at the moment.
I do not, sir.
Okay, uh, well, we've concluded the business, so, uh, want to have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, I guess the discussion's over, so let's call for the vote.
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Thank everyone for, uh, attending and, and all the good input and information that was shared, uh, at this meeting. Very productive. Thank you very much and good night.